Good morning, welcome to our Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, November the 28th. Roll call please.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Present.
Chair of the Node.
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
If you would, please join us in our pledge allegiance and our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Scott. Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for our county and for those who lead us. We're thankful, Lord, for those who served us during this snowstorm this weekend, those our law enforcement and EMS and firefighters and everybody who's out there, the DOT guys out there working on those roads. We thank you for keeping everybody safe, just to keep us warm, watch over us today, help our leadership to use wisdom and guidance as they make decisions for our county. Thank you for each of them and for their families. Now, watch over us now in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, take us to Correspondence and Organizational Business.
Derek, we'll begin with our recognitions then. First in.
Yeah. Now, we're going to recognize the Detention Center cook, Sophie Browning, for her years of service, be over 10 years, I believe, from February of 2008 to November of 2018.
Okay. Sophie.
Sophie is unable to join us today.
Okay. Certainly, I know that was a position down there that was consistent and we had some very good compliments on that.
Derek, do you want to say anything about her?
I would. I would just say that Sophie retires effective Saturday, December 1st is when her retirement goes in place. And as you know, with the transition of her retirement and things, we've moved to a food service provider as a contract. She has been instrumental in helping with that, part of the process of the selection process for that, and then she's working with that company to kind of help them with their transition and things like that. So, she's been a benefit and we wish her the best of luck. Her retirement is well deserved. So, we look forward to talking to her in the future.
Be sure you convey our gratitude to her for us.
Desirable.
Okay, then Derek, we have another one then?
Yeah. Recognize departing review appraiser Sandy Roebuck for her 21-plus years' service to Franklin County. So, she wants to come up. Jamie, if you want to come up with her.
Well, Sandy taught me what I know. So, she's been here for 21 years and I've only been here for going on eight. So, she has a vast amount of institutional knowledge as well as she's been through the six-year review cycle enough times people now recognize her when she comes back to their house six years later. So, she'll be greatly missed.
Hey, she can come on up and get a better picture.
Randy, before we move on, I do want to talk a little bit about the Appraiser's Office. I'm not sure that our Appraiser's Office consistently gets the credit it deserves. Since I have been here, and I'm sure long before, they have just been rock solid. Phil was rock solid, Jamie's rock solid, and they do not do that without employees like Sandy. And that is a department that is heavily dependent on its staff to go out and do the work and certainly appreciate all that she's done. And it's hard to replace 20-plus years of experience. You know, people don't stay at jobs that long anymore, and so certainly will be missed.
Yes, and there is a reception for her to honor Friday from 2:00 to 4:00, second floor of the courthouse. So, hopefully, our employees and other people get a chance to go by and people from the community to recognize that and celebrate that with her. So, congratulations again, and thank you very much. Anything else then under Correspondence, Derek?
Oh.
Okay, public comment then. Citizens desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussions limited to five minutes. The Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Okay?
Norman Woogie.
If you would, please state your name and your address when you get to the podium.
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pawnee Road. I didn't plan on speaking today, but guilty of thinking. I wrote a letter some time ago to the newspaper, given the qualifications of good county commissioners, and I guess I messed up. The commissioners have a responsibility of thinking, thinking about what they do and their decisions, how it affects the county and the people of the county, but more so on the future of their career of being county commissioner. I have hopes that we get to thinking a little better because I can cite a lot of mistakes, particularly the motorcycle thing was terrible. But it worked out, but you've got people that advise you and they need to do their homework, and you need to not be too lazy and get out there and find out what's happening and do the research. Thank you very much.
Gene Hurt.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, Gene Hurt, 219 West Forest Street in Linden, Kansas. Okay. Two weeks ago, I received a phone call from the gentleman that I had brought before you, the Commission, two years ago, two years ago on November 30th, 2016. I told you at that time that he was in arrest because he went to working for another company. And he wanted to know about Proximity Park down here. And I told him, and I told you in the meeting, was that the issue, you'd have to talk to the Chamber of Commerce, which I guess he did. And that was two years ago, November 30th, 2016. Mr. Rick Howard was the chairman at the time. And the video is up there on the website for all of you to see. Two weeks ago, he called me, and he says, "I never saw a more mixed-up city and county as what we found out out there at Proximity Park." Now, that was a hit in the face. And he said, "You know why? It's because it's a floodplain." Now, yesterday, you and the city had your meeting, okay? That word was brought up. Okay? What's happened is, is he and his company is going to Edgerton. They have what they're going to give them free land. Free land was the building. Now, yesterday, your person that talked told you real clearly that Topeka, here in Kansas, is trying to be incentive-wise to give free land to people to come to Topeka to put their warehouse and manufacturing. Now, I know my time is limited for this segment, but I will on the next segment when you bring up your bonds. But I tell you, you're all going to have to decide about you two, and you've got to move. That was his other stress to you yesterday. You've got to move. You can't sit. You've got to make decisions now. Now, people, or you're going to lose them. They're not going to stay here. Your workforce is one of your main topics you've got to deal with, and that means getting the education to the kids now, and who's going to be out there to work at a plant if you want one for $21 an hour, like it was at my plant where I worked. And we had electronic technicians, we had pipe fitters, all that in that plant. And it was a queue clearance place where I had to have a queue clearance. I made that clear to you before because people drove them there. They wanted to work at Allied, they wanted to work at Bendix, is what was first called years ago. So, you're all going to have to make a major decision. What are you going to give up for an incentive to get people here? Because right now, they're turning away from you, and you heard Wendy Lee yesterday say it. "I can't believe about wetlands. They're concerned about the wetlands here." Sure, I told you that over two years ago. Two years ago. Why couldn't you moved over out of the wetlands and bought the land and left that out of there? Then you might be more subjectable of getting people in there. I want it to exist. I want it to work. But by God, I'll tell you, as he said, "This is a tough group to get through." You better start thinking, both of you. Thank you.
Don Stottlemyre.
Don Stottlemyre, 3903 Rock Creek Road, Rantoul. I came before you Commissioners about a month ago and discussed that I had been working with K-State, their engineering department on energy and so forth, and I went to one of their presentations at the KAC in Kansas City. And I've been working with Mr. David Carter, which is head of K-State Engineering Extension. And he has got working under a contract from the State Commerce Department, and it's for a tool for improving Kansas public buildings. It's been a program since 2007 in Kansas. It's done 60 successful projects already in the state of Kansas. And I've met with the city and talked to Derek about it, and your maintenance man, keep him updated where we was headed. And I've talked to several courses, involves six counties, but I'm starting, our first presentation will be right here in Franklin County. The other counties are invited. I've been working with Bob, one of the Commissioners over in Miami County with this project also, and you're all invited. If you want to attend, guest speaker, David Carter, will be head of K-State Engineering, will be at our meeting in this room on December 4th at 9:00 in the morning. He'll give us tools for improving Kansas public buildings and small energy program, which I knew Wellsville Chamber and Ottawa Chamber, I've both been working with them, and they're very interested. In fact, Ottawa asked me permission if they could go ahead and contact Mr. Carter because they were, they was wanting to get the move, and they didn't even want to wait for the presentation here, but they will ask somebody here. But just wanted to let you guys know. And Mr. Howard is our board member from U County Commissioners, and I know, I don't know if you have to say anything, if more than two of them are attending our meeting, they're not part of the meeting, they could just come in and, you know, but they're more than welcome to, he's going to be the first thing on the agenda. You don't have to stay any longer than his conversation. I know the rest will be kind of boring, the rest of the meeting, but he's planning on 30 to 45-minute presentation, and he'll be ready to answer any of your questions that you may have. I know, I was amazed at how broad of a thing it was. It just, it don't even, it's not all buildings. It can be even sidewalks and a lot of other things. It could be our recycling center out here as far as energy projects for our building out here. So, it's really a big, broad deal, and so y'all, welcome to attend. You have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, but I'll let the gentleman from K-State, you know, I'm facilitating it in my organization and U County Commissioners, providing a room to have it, and this gentleman's been doing it long enough that he can answer your questions about whether you guys are interested. But you'll see that there's, like I said, 60 other school districts and counties and cities and so forth across the state of Kansas has taken. The thing about it is that you're not working with a company that's trying to make money from what they're offering you. They've already made their money through the grant to provide the service to you. So, it's not something that they're, you know, unless you get into a big later-on project and you want them to facilitate it, you can hire them to facilitate it at a later time if you like. But he'll explain all that if you care to attend. Be in this room next Tuesday morning at 9:00.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Clark.
Pete Clark, 328 Popper Street in Wellsville, Kansas. I was here last week, and I had no idea that five minutes go by so quick. So, that's why I made that little thought there, a letter there. And I would kind of like to explain what we have in mind for that building. Years past, it's been accounting of a cowboy bar for over the years. That's not what we have in mind to do there. We kind of want to get it reopened for maybe over 30 people and seniors, activities, events, maybe, you know, weddings, birthdays, and be a place that someone, it kind of a lounge setting. Oh, there will be dances too, but, and for, like someone in the area wants to bring some friend or something just to get away, it'd be a nice place to go to. And right now, the walk-in cooler needs to be replaced or repaired, ice machine needs a new one of those. A lot of the sound equipment has been stolen out of the building, and beverages coolers need to be repaired, just a lot of expenses getting the building back open. So, wife and I decided we have some property over in Miami County that we put on the market, and probably as soon as we get sold, we're going to use some of those funds to start buying this equipment for this building. And I'll emphasize again that it's, it'll be just a nice setting for an older crowd and someplace that'd be nice and be an asset to the county and the community, I believe. And you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them or try to.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
That's all of those then, Janet?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, going to our consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda would be the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for November 21, and consider and approve a claim vouchers amount of $4,000.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Right.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair of the Node?
Yes. Okay, moving to our first item of business. Consider for approval a resolution authorizing the public sale of $3 million worth of general obligation bond for the purpose of financing the remainder of the road improvements as part of the Proximity Park project.
We do have one public comment associated with this item, and we do have some speakers here for this.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, Derek, with your...
Sure. This is something we've talked about for months. We knew that there would be a second part of this bond. You know, we're fortunate, and we've talked about this several times, but the construction bids came in substantially lower than we were anticipating, and so this second bond issue is also considerably lower than we were anticipating. I've got David Artaberry here as well as Tyler Ellsworth. David is our financial advisor. Tyler is our bond counsel. I'll have David come up and kind of walk us through this process. You all know him. He's been in front of you several times. He helped us with the last issue, so.
Okay. Morning.
Morning. I've got three handouts here. If you wouldn't mind just taking one of each and passing it now, and I'll try to keep my presentation here brief, but obviously, if you've got any questions at all, feel free to just chime in. Yeah, as was mentioned, this bond issue represents sort of the final phase of debt to be issued to fund the street improvements in Proximity Park. The first issue was sold, oh, and I think the early part of last year, the middle part of 2017, and it was approximately a $7 million issue. This one is approximately going to be $3 million. And I think prior to the bond sale occurring in early January, I'll work with staff to nail that number down a little more exactly. It might be 3 million, it might be a little bit different, but it's going to be approximately 3 million. The first thing I wanted to kind of point your attention to is that the calendar of events. This is just simply an outline of the steps, oh, see, okay, that's going down now.
It's coming.
Of the steps that we'll be going through to actually issue the bonds. And the bolded items are the actions that are going to be required from the county commission. And you'll see, you know, the first things to do is to review the financing plan. That's what we're here to do today. And then, as long as everything looks good to you and you get all your questions answered today, there'll be a sale resolution for you to consider. And in a minute, I'll ask Tyler to come up and kind of go over that with you. But after that occurs, then we'll be doing some preparation for the bond sale between now and January 9th. And that preparation includes updating and making sure that the preliminary official statement, which is one of the handouts I gave to you, a draft of it is, is completed and it's distributed to potential purchasers. We'll go through the process of advertising for the sale of the bonds in the local newspaper, the Kansas Register, and some of the national bond publications. We'll also go through the process of having the county's rating reviewed and hopefully confirmed. All that will then lead to, up to the bond sale date on the 9th of January. On that date, we'll receive the bids from the sale of the bonds. I think last time when we sold the bonds, we had about four or five bids. I expect the same response again this time. And then, after the sale occurs, we'll then come back to you all with the final results in hand. We'll know the final interest rate, the final principal amount for the bond issue. And at that time, if everything is acceptable, you'll be asked to adopt a bond resolution, which is the official document, locking in the issuance of the bonds and the interest rates. After that occurs, as scheduled on January 9th, then it'll take a few weeks before, to assemble all the documents, get the approval for the issue from the state attorney general, and then hopefully by the end of January, January 30th, then the issue will close, and that's when you'll receive the bond proceeds. So, same process we went through last year, but obviously different dates on it. The next thing I wanted to point out to you is, there's a sheet with a graph and a bunch of numbers on it, and this is an update of some information we've provided to you in the past. What I wanted to really quickly, though, point out is that initially, we had estimated that it would require about 1.2 mils in order to add this new debt onto the county's books. The assessed valuation of the county has grown a little more than we anticipated. The interest rates on the bonds were a little bit less than we anticipated, and as Derek mentioned, the project cost has come in less than was estimated. As a result of all of that, instead of 1.2 mils, we're projecting that it's probably only going to take about 6 tenths of a mil, about half of what was originally anticipated. So, obviously, that's good news too. So, you know, that's it. The preliminary official statement that, you have a copy of there. If you have some time between now and, you know, middle of December to look that over, if you notice anything in it that needs to be changed or something that's wrong, please feel free to pass those comments maybe on through Derek or Janet, and we'll make sure that they get incorporated. I did notice the date up at the top here is still the date from the last transaction, but we're going to be going through this, and everyone's going to have a chance to review it, includes staff in the next, in the next week. So, that's about it. Obviously, here to answer any questions that you might have, to make sure everyone understands the process and is comfortable with it.
Questions?
You know, I think you guys see David when we're doing these bond issues, but what you don't always see, Janet and I have worked hard on our bond rating, trying to improve our standing there, and David's been a tremendous resource for us in that endeavor, and he's always available, and I appreciate that, David. And certainly, he, it's kind of been a safety net for Janet and I in that any time we, you know, we have questions in that arena, he's been willing to devote however much of his time is necessary, and I know Janet appreciates that as well, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and I do appreciate you guys' focus on those issues, like the rating. I know a lot of times when you go through a rating, after you go through it, you go, "We're done, it's over with." But following up on some of those things that the rating agency pointed out, both of your strengths and weaknesses is always, I appreciate that when working with them. I would also, now I'd like to, I guess, real briefly turn it over to Tyler Ellsworth with Q-Tech Rock, just to kind of go over with you in a little more detail the resolution that you'd be considering today.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Tom.
Just briefly, and I think David covered it pretty well, the resolution that you're being asked to consider this morning basically authorizes our firm as bond counsel, David's firm as your financial advisor, and staff to sort of go through the steps necessary to prepare for the bond sale, which will actually be January 8th, the day before the January 9th commission meeting, and get things sort of teed up so that we can accept or take bids on your behalf, which would be officially accepted at the January 9th meeting. And that's really what we're here to do this morning, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the particulars, but that's it in essence.
Anybody have a question then, for Tom?
Yes, well, I look at these big bond issues like this, how does that affect the overall finances of the county? I don't know, maybe Janet might have an idea as far as future projects we might have or something like that. I don't know how we stood debt-wise as far as doing other projects.
You might have an answer to that, but actually, David probably has a better handle on that.
Yeah.
Because part of what he does is look at the bond issue in the context of your overall financial picture.
Yeah, that's a very good question, and, you know, the county's actually, even though these are pretty large bond issues, the first one for Proximity Park and this one, it's about, you know, in total, a little over $10 million. When you, the way the rating agencies and investors tend to look at debt levels is they look at it as a percentage of your tax base, and they also look at it as the amount of debt you have as relative to your population. So, they have a debt-to-assessed valuation ratio and a debt per capita. In both of those instances, the county's debt levels are still considered to be very, very moderate. They're not considered to be above average at all. Now, one other thing that they also look at is they look at the debt of the overlapping jurisdictions or the underlying jurisdictions, like the city and the school districts. So, when you look at those levels, you know, your debt levels are higher because those over, underlying jurisdictions, like the school districts, have more debt outstanding. But still, even taking that into account, investors and rating agencies consider the overall debt levels, as well as the county's debt level, to, still to be moderate and to be at acceptable levels.
Okay, thank you very much for answering that question. Anything else then? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. If not, then I would be looking for a motion then on the...
We have a...
We have, we have, I'm sorry. Gene, thank you very much.
Gene Hurt, 219 West Forest Street in Lening, Kansas. Commissioner Roy Dunn, thank you for asking that question, because that's the question I was wanting to ask myself. So, we got an answer, okay? So, I thank you for that. The worst thing about it is, of this huge amount of money, and he's claiming somewhere around 10 million overall, is the people of this county are going to have to pay for this, and the taxes are probably going to go down. But the worst thing about it is, is to me, and that has to go with yesterday, was they ask the individual that's out there for Industrial Park, when do you expect everything to be done out there? And the gentleman stated, probably not till the end of next fall. And then he brought up the issue about sidewalks out there. I thought you were just building a road. Don't you know, don't you know, these companies want to make sure, where are you putting the sidewalks? Is that going to be where you think they're going to build the buildings? They don't even decide what land they want or what section of the land. Most of them are not going to want the floodplain, I can tell you that right now. So, what's this deal about sidewalks? My God, I tell you, and I want to make one more thing here, all you people out there that see this today or hear this on the radio, please, you can go to the City of Ottawa's website on Facebook, you can see what took place yesterday. You all need to see this, because the emphasis the man put on, you've got to move. No more playing around, you've got to move, or you're going to lose it. And that's the main thing here, I emphasize, your workforce, you're going to have to have people of education that want to come here, and they want to have a job that is secure. They don't want to leave, they'll have something like what happened to General Motors yesterday, announcement of closing these plants down. So, you know, that's why, when I was in the plant I was at, we had government contracts, and we were pretty well sure we had those. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have another comment then, before we proceed with a motion? Okay. Everybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we authorized the public sale of $3 million worth of the general obligation bonds.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renault?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, discuss ideas regarding potential remodel of Suites 1 and 2 in the annex building.
Yeah, as you guys know, Suite 1 has sat vacant for a while. I was approached by Ransom Memorial Hospital, it's been a couple of months ago now, they've been in and out of Suite 1, probably since I've been here, expressing interest in moving back in again, and then as conversations have kind of developed, they've let it be known that what they would really like is Suite 2. Now, I don't know that, I mean, I think they would take all of the space in Suite 2, but I think what's more valuable to them is it is contiguous to space that they already have. So, on the other side of Suite 2, I believe that's Suite 4, they occupy all of that, and in talking with them, if they could get Suite 2 or a portion of it, and I don't know how it all works, but their reimbursement rates are better if their space is all at one address, and certainly, if we decide we want to talk more about this, I will get Pam Harris in here, and she can explain that far better than I can. But what I wanted to talk about today was just your thoughts on that. We're not making great use of Suite 2 now. You walk in there, there is a lot of space that's just not being used. Having said that, you know, I've got an EMS chief who is bursting at the seams over at the ambulance station, and he needs more space, and so, you know, what we've kind of talked about, and I've met with HR, I've met with Nick, I've met with Brandon, the potential of just gutting all of 1 and 2, just blowing it out effectively, and we could then create two new suites, but we could put Ransom adjacent to Suite 4, and then utilize whatever space we feel like we need in what would be the new Suite 1. Lloyd Builders has been working with us on creating just a very, very basic plan to give us a rough idea of what the costs may be, what that might look like, and I believe yesterday, they got us, I forget what Josh called it, a needs assessment or something. But just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that before we get too far down the road.
Where are we at on the cost that they give you?
No, I don't think we've got an estimated cost on it yet, but I will tell you, I don't, just my basic understanding is, it's not tremendous, because those walls are just, I mean, they're just frames with drywall that you can pretty easily move, and we're not talking about, you know, mass, I don't believe we're going to have massive plumbing work or anything like that, so.
The basic tenant finish is what it is.
Yeah.
I think, obviously, we'd be splitting the cost with Ransom, because their tenant finishing their area, and contractor'd already be here. We don't use a good portion of 2, I guess, and I would think if this space was actually built for the need that it has now, as that has evolved over the years, we'd probably use even maybe a little less, just because it's not a horribly efficient use as it is. So, the space we give up, we'd be getting revenue off of renting out, so. Be interested in how quickly we recapture our part of the remodel.
Do you have an estimate at all on how much additional square footage then we would be giving up to them? Is this significant? Like I said, the cost we're going to get out of that revenue, is it a 10-year payback or a one-year payback? That's the question, I guess.
Yeah, and certainly can have all of that info for you. I think the purpose of today was to just see if there's any appetite at all. I will tell you, our annex fund, you know, as it stands today, is we're not hurting for revenue there. But I think Colt hit the nail on the head. We, Ransom's been a great tenant for us, and so, in doing this, we would be helping them, and we would be gaining additional revenue on whatever amount of space that is. And then, the remaining space would be tailor-made for what we need, and so, effectively, and then if you look around the annex, I mean, there's just not a whole lot of, I mean, we own the building, and at that point, I think we could say that we're making really good use of it. You know, I think at that point, the next space up for debate would be this room right here, and whether or not we're effectively utilizing all of that, but that's, or if this is where we want to be, I know that's something that's been brought up, but that's probably a conversation for another day. But if there is the appetite, we can move forward, we can get some more concrete numbers, we can bring a plan in front of you, certainly can have all of that in fairly short order.
I guess my one question would be, is the Franklin County needs going to drive the side we keep Suite 1, or is it going to be the hospital drive what they need in Suite 2? Which one is going to drive the other one? Are we going to let them pick first how many square feet they need, we take, decide how these left over? Or are we going to take Suite 1 and say, here's how many we have, this is how much is left over?
Well, I think, given that we own this building, I mean, and granted, now, you're asking me as the county administrator, so I'm always going to tell you, we need to take care of our own organization first, and make sure that we have the space that we need, and not being wasteful or extravagant, but just to try and future-proof us as much as we can. I mean, I've got Nick here, and he could address this better than me, but over a long enough timeline, I think they're probably going to outgrow their station out there, but this could certainly add life to that by getting him and his assistant out of there. But...
But right now, you're looking at HR only in Suite 1?
Well, no, it'd be HR, it would be space for Nick, it would be, you know, we've, and those are the ideas that we need to talk about. We would like, we need, I say state-of-the-art, but we really need a nice conference room for all of the things that we host, the job interviews, the meetings. So, we've talked about space for HR, space for Nick and a couple of his staff, conference room, ideas about a space for you all, like a shared space, I mean, there's been a lot of ideas floated around, and I think that's part of the discussion that we would be having if there was interest there. So, but I, you know, obviously, we work at the direction of the board, but I would think that we would want to make sure that, as an organization, we are as future-proofed as we can be, and then, you know, I think Ransom, from what I gather, would be tickled just to have, you know, like if we split Suite 2 as it exists today, and they got the, be the Western 1,000 or 1,500 square feet of that, I get the impression they would be incredibly happy with that, but that's...
Well, if it also going to affect their billing and what they can get out of that, then I think that's a, that is a plus.
But if we did nothing, the current space that's in Suite 2 could be occupied by the needed space for EMS. Is that correct? Or is there too much space there still, if that would...
You've got cubicles that wouldn't offer HIPAA requirements, there's, it doesn't fit, is my understanding, there's some small offices that probably aren't big enough for...
Yeah, I, could they literally fit in there? Yes, is that, and I suppose you could argue that having them in there, we would be making better use of the space, but it's not...
It wouldn't be designed to the need that we need.
No, and to be frank, I have no idea, whoever designed that space, I have no clue what they were thinking. Like, that space is, I don't know what it is set up for, but it's just not, I mean, walk through there, I don't, the half wall there over by my old office, like, I don't really understand the point of a lot of that, and so...
I just want to make that point, that it's even, you know, we couldn't use the space to the best use currently, and if the best option is to move forward, to design something that would meet our needs and would benefit the hospital for their revenue purposes and for their space needs, that seems like a more logical position for us to look at as tenants and owners of the building.
Yeah, I would think so, and Ransom, I mean, they need the space, and what really has driven this conversation is they had contractors in looking at Suite 1, and so, we really got to talking about it, and if they're going to, you know, spend money renovating Suite 1, and kind of bringing that up to their needs when that's not really what they want, I mean, I just feel like, and we don't really have what we have, I think we're saying the same thing, but it just seems the most logical to work together and pool our resources and take care of both.
Yeah, I just don't want people to think we're just out to jump on this boat because it's moving, but it is the best option for both agencies, I believe.
Roy, you okay with that?
It looks like, just the conversation, it looks like I got to gut 1 and 2, then start reconfigure it to what the needs are. I don't know if that's going to be the answer or not, but it sounds like that's, take out all the energy or walls and reconfigure it.
Yeah, and it may be, and that's, this is, you know, the very early part of this discussion, Brandon and I will keep working with Lloyd Builders, and Janet and I will look at the, once we get some kind of quote, we'll look at the financial ramifications, what the additional revenue from Ransom would look like, get that payoff period on the, but, you know, it's...
And that's something that, would that have to be encumbered or approved into next year then, Janet, to be into the next budget?
We probably need to do it in next year's budget. I mean, we can still do an amendment yet this year, and we probably still are going to have to do that, I am working on that right now. So, that will be in front of you shortly, but in order to get that in, you know, there is a 10-day publication window, so we would probably have to have that approved right away. I think in the timeline that Derek's talking about, you know, bringing this back in another meeting, and, you know, reviewing this and getting some statistics for you guys, you know, on how long it's going to take us to recoup this money, I mean, realistically, we could do this, you know, the first week of January, if you wanted to do it that fast. I mean, we're really not talking about a long period of time here, that's one month, and I think if Ransom knew that's the timeline we were on, that, you know, that, I think that would be fine for them.
I know it would, I mean, I'm talking with their staff, I know it would, I mean, we were talking about HR and what their needs were going to be, and then we were talking about gayless retirement, which is coming up, kind of middle part of next year, and they got the impression that, you know, we were looking to wait that long, and I think they were going to be okay with that, and certainly, we're not. I mean, I don't think we're wanting to wait until, you know, April or May to get going, I think we want to keep the process rolling now, so I don't, it's my belief, and I will get them in here in front of you, but it's my belief, they will be pretty thrilled with this idea and this timeline if we choose to take it forward, so.
Okay, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Okay, going, next item is staff reports. Derek?
Yeah. Several of us went to the sheriff's ceremony yesterday, and I'll let you guys talk about that as well, but that was very well done. I could tell by the reactions of the employees who were receiving the awards that they were genuinely appreciative of that, and certainly, you know, anything we can do to recognize our employees, and certainly, in Jeff's case, these awards were all related to, and I'm going to use the wrong vernacular, I'm sure, but just acts of valor, effectively, saving lives, and so, had a nice video put together that just kind of showed some of the things that they've done, a lot of family members of the law enforcement personnel were there. I just thought it was a very nice ceremony, I thought Jeff did a great job, he kind of emceed it all and made a great point about how, you know, the families of law enforcement, I mean, they're law enforcement, too, and certainly, it's hard on them, and this time of year, I can't help but think about those guys, because while we're all, you know, having Thanksgiving with our families, or we're going to be having Christmas with our families, a lot of them won't be able to, because, you know, it's a 24/7 job, and so, have a tremendous appreciation for Jeff and what all of his employees do, as well as, you know, Nick and all of our first responders, it's hard work. That's all I had.
Okay, Jeff, you have anything?
I just want to start by saying thank you for you guys showing up yesterday. It meant a lot to the staff that you guys were there, and I appreciated your help and participation in the ceremony yesterday. Earlier this year, the 911 dispatch center, as you know, transitioned to become a standalone agency, and Nick Robbins is a director, I've been working with Nick throughout this time... I've been working with Nick, um, throughout this time. And one of the plans that had been, that, one of the desires that had been going on for a while now, a couple of years, has been a training, um, program and training center. And Nick has kind of got things really going on that and, um, and how he wants to work. So we're working together to, uh, um, up with the, some of the old office space up on the third floor. So we're gonna be transitioning to some people, moving some of my staff around and getting his people set up up there. We're working with, uh, with IT already to get all that going. And so, um, that'll be happening here real soon. And, um, that's just something that he and I have been, are kind of working together on our staffs, or work, staff is working together on that. So I just wanted to give you guys an update. Things are moving forward with that. He may want to share a little bit more a- about that. They also, um, I sent out the, this flyer to all the department heads. And, um, this is, it's a leadership training that's gonna happen on December twenty-seventh. It's open to the public. The reason I bring it up is that Franklin County, um, through my role as being on the Board of Trustees for Leadership Franklin County, Franklin County is a cosponsor of this. It's not costing us anything. But the speaker that's coming in is going to be speaking on leadership and ego, um, about affecting positive, um, you know, change in your, a culture change in your, in your organizations. And, uh, we'll be having two sessions on that on December twenty-seventh. And I want to invite, um, anyone that want, that's interested to come out and be at the, uh, Memorial Auditorium. It's free of charge. And, uh, the speaker's a pretty dynamic speaker. He, he does a great job, so, um, I, someone that I got familiar, became familiar with through the Sheriff's Association, he did some of our training, and I, we brought him here. And then he's been back a few times. Calmar really likes him as well. So just wanted to make sure that you were all aware and that, um, you all are invited. And kind of on a light note, I noticed while Gene was up here speaking, based on his jacket, the chiefs have even given the Steeler fans something to cheer for this year, so I just thought I'd point that out.
Hey, Jeff, you said two sessions, are they identical sessions, or they?
Yes, it'll be the same, it'll be the same thing. Um, the ten o'clock, it's ten to eleven-thirty, and then again, from twelve-thirty to two, it'll be the same, the same presentation two times over that way. If organizations can't have people gone all day, they send part of their people in the morning session and part of their people in the afternoon session, so.
And that's at OMA?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Jeff, before you, and, and Nick could probably address this a little bit. I, frankly, my Public Works Director would be, be the best, but I don't have one here today. Uh, do you have any comments on the storm? Did that affect, were you guys out a lot?
We were. And we were out, um, and I did not bring the numbers, and Nick may have more of those for us, but we had a large amount of slide-offs. We did have some crashes that were injury, injury crashes. But for the most part, our traffic problems were, um, were just people that slid off into the, into ditches and medians. I know that I had myself and a couple other salaried employees out, and we also had to call out a couple more hourly, uh, staff members to help cover the county. We had to have people pre-positioned because you couldn't get anywhere in any amount of time. So, uh, we kind of divided, we kind of divided the county up and, and were able to take care of things that way. I think we spent about, um, well, we, we would have been out there for rough, about four, four hours was about the average, but, uh, that we had people on overtime, but part of the salary people, we were out about six or eight hours a day, so. It went, it went well. The radio system, I will tell you, and Nick and I have talked about this, the radio system is, we, we believe it was working great. We're still going through some growing pains with the transition of the operation of that and how we use channels and things like that. But, uh, the Advisory Board that we have has been kind of, addresses those issues. We put little changes in, and I, I think we're getting it to where we really need to be. With it, it's been very beneficial. About a week and a half ago, we had a per, had a pursuit involving, uh, some gunshots and things like that. Ended up over in Osage County. We were off-road, um, out in fields. The old system, there's no way we could have communicated to find our people. And we were able to maintain, uh, positive control of that, of that, uh, area. We're able to communicate well. So we appreciate, um, that radio system being in place, and, uh, it's, it's benefited us in law enforcement greatly, so. Any other questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Nick?
Good morning. Just to echo what the sheriff said on the, the roads, Sunday morning, as you all, or Sunday when that hit, it was bad, but, uh, I do want to give kudos to our road and bridge department because in Rosewood, we went to bed, I was wondering how we were gonna do anything. The next morning, they were all pretty clear, so it was nice. The, uh, amount of business that dispatch was getting, the sheriff's department was, uh, absurd. There was a lot of stuff going on. It was well-handled, I was impressed. This is really one of my first snowstorms in dispatch, how effectively that, that actually went, so. Good job to them. I don't have the numbers of slide-offs. I, uh, have a lot of numbers to bring to you guys next week. But I do want to, uh, also talk about the training. Sarah Pethley, as you guys know, is the dispatch manager. One of the things I wanted to do when I got in there and got to talking to him is enhance the education for our dispatchers. And look at how we do orientation, look at how we do a lot of things. I've worked with Jeff, as he said, to get a room upstairs. What's gonna, that room will do is it'll be Sarah's office, but it'll also house a fifth, essentially, a fifth dispatch console that could be used if overflow, but the thing about it, we can train on that. So when we have a new hire, for the first four or five weeks, they'll be up in that office, learning the system before they get stuck in the dispatch center, so. Sarah will, had just finished her, uh, emergency telecommunicator course, which, uh, allows us a forty-hour course that will allow the new employees to go through and see, be educated on verbiage for fire, law, EMS, to go through ICS, really a good overall view of what the dispatch center does. So after the first forty hours, they'll have an idea what they signed up to do, and, and we can build on that with the rest of the orientation program. It is my expectation, we'll put other dispatcher through as we go along. The neat thing about that course, as you guys know, with the EMS department, we've built a training program. When we're teaching that class, it's something that we can offer to other places to come in and hopefully, you know, create some revenue, source buy if we're teaching that class. We might as well have other people here. I have found out that the EMD course, which is Emergency Medical Dispatching, uh, if you're a paramedic and you work in dispatch, you can be an instructor for that. We currently send our people all over to have that, to get that class and, uh, pay pretty good amounts of money for it. That's another option that we can maybe bring in to our education for, uh, if we got a new dispatcher doing it, we can teach it in-house and maybe get some revenue that way. So always looking at ways to enhance that, to enhance our dispatch center. Sarah and I did attend the Administrative, uh, nine-one-one Council Day where we went out to Newton and met a bunch of, uh, other dispatch, uh, directors. With that, uh, the state's got a push for standardized education for, uh, dispatchers. By the end of the day, Sarah and I both are on that committee with the state. So, um, the hope is we can start, uh, putting some highlight and emphasis on what education we need to bring to, uh, enhance what we got going. And I appreciate the sheriff giving us that room upstairs to set up that secondary. With that, we've been talking about the next gen nine-one-one system. Next week, I'll be on your guys' plate to talk about, but how we're going to, uh, advance our phone system and get up to date with what we need to do. So that'll be coming next week. As far as EMS, uh, we're, uh, still busy running calls. I will tell you that, uh, the bariatric equipment has got quite a bit of use lately. And, uh, it, it's, it's amazing. We, uh, we have actually had a lot of compliments of people who have been transported to other places and, uh, then been transported with our equipment. And, you know, some of them have said they didn't, had to have a lot of pain medicine because of the state that they're in. And with this, we haven't had to give pain medicine because it's been such a smooth transition. So I wanted to thank you guys again for the option to get now. That has been an amazing piece of equipment that we've got, so. And, uh, to follow it up, I thank you for, uh, supporting Derek and all of us at looking at getting some more space over here because, as you guys well know, that building was built in nineteen-eighties for a staff that we have greatly outgrown now. So the options they have in storage and the stuff we have to have, I think, is essential. And I do appreciate that and hope that that can create some longevity and that's not having to look at some major purchases down the road.
What ideally would you use that space for? Do you want to go over that real quick?
Over there?
Uh, well, your new space and then?
Well, if we can move, the one thing we have over there is we don't have a lot, we don't have any storage right now. So talking about twenty thousand dollars worth of a bariatric equipment is sitting in the bay. You got no place to put it. We've taken our old storage space, turned it into offices with having our community education, that kind of stuff. The other things are, we don't have, uh, good handicap accessibility to get in there for people to come pay their bills. We don't have a good professional area for that. They have to go all the way back to the back to see me, or I have to come up there. If we have a meeting over there, it's usually in the dayroom and you got people talking and working. So the space over here would give us that professional thing that we really need. When you have people coming in, they can go in, we could actually have access to a conference room, have access for that stuff. Over there, it'll allow us to get the storage that we need because right now, we're storing stuff up on top that you have to dig through to get. We can't, uh, you guys have seen it, you know what I'm talking about. There's, it'll allow us to maybe preserve that building a little bit longer by utilizing the, getting, uh, Christie, who's my division chief, will be able to move up front. The, uh, uh, community education person will have an office. And then the other offices over there that we've built that were storage, we'll be able to go back to storage. So we'll get us some of that stuff we need.
Orderly over there at your shop, but it's very much so bursting at the seams. Like you said, you have some very expensive equipment kind of sitting where you maybe wouldn't ideally want it to be, but.
Well, just.
Same if it's secured, but it's not.
Just to give you an idea, the other day, we had all of the St. Luke's Outreach Hospitals that you guys see popping up. The, we secured with them where we're teaching ACLS and PALS. When they come down to talk to us to see our training area, the only place at that time we had to meet was in the dayroom. And the crews were eating lunch at that time, too. It was just us when they walked in, and it was just one of those silly things where you got people, what we're teaching is many different large, the agencies we are, it's kind of, it would be nice to have the professional setup, bring those people in, have the setup to do that. And that, to me, means a lot, especially looking at our education department that has made over forty thousand dollars this year. So that, that's something that, that we've really worked on building and want to see enhanced. So, hope that answers the question a little bit.
Before you, before you leave, Nick, uh, you talk about this space upstairs that you're getting on the third floor. One of the big things that I've really wanted to look at for a long time would be some kind of a program for dispatch to be able to work with high school students, to be able to train and to, to grow our next generation of dispatchers to, to fill those jobs. That's part of that workforce development. I think that we could partner with, uh, USD two ninety on and maybe, instead of looking outside, we can start developing people for these jobs ourselves.
And it's funny you say that because when Sarah was out at the education or, the, the education or the instructor portion of that, the people that were talking about it was talking how they have worked with the high schools to get this program in the high schools, along with, you know, the EMT classes, along with the, the pre-law classes, that stuff. And, uh, she was extremely excited, sending me text messages, asking what we've done. I will tell you that in EMS, we've, uh, we've got students that come through, and a lot of them end up coming through a second time through the career class. And I have reached out to, uh, see what it would look like to have some of those maybe come through our areas and, and see if we can do that. But I agree with you, and we have actually had that conversation since this class because it can be taught.
Great.
And that's pretty much all I got, and next week, we'll have a, a pretty good agenda of stuff for you.
All right, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Allison?
Just wanted to give you, uh, an update, what we have going on at Community Corrections. Um, the state of Kansas has implemented some new standards on the juvenile side. So right now, we're going through the revision of our current standards and policies and procedures to update those. Also, we have two new staff members that are within six months of employment, so I'll be bringing those in to introduce them here, um, in the near future. So that's all I got today.
Okay, all right, thanks. Listen to anything at all? Do you have some Christmas event going on?
Good morning. So Santa Claus is coming to visit us on Saturday. Um, so from eleven-thirty to two-thirty, you can bring your pet out and have your picture taken with Santa Claus for a fifteen-dollar donation. So we've got going, that going on Saturday. It's a very popular event. We typically see about a hundred and fifty pets come through the shelter, um, to get their picture taken. So it's definitely a, a busy event, but we're excited Santa will be visiting us with the pets.
Okay, so that's Saturday, eleven-thirty to two-thirty?
Uh-huh, at the shelter.
Oh, you get that on radio tomorrow then?
Um, I'm gonna be on the radio at twelve-twenty today, talking about it, so.
Oh, great, good, good.
Awesome, thank you.
Janet? Okay, Commissioner comments, Board reports. Rick?
No, I haven't been to any meetings other than the one we, we're all attended yesterday with the city, and so I've been to it.
I did attend a study session for the city of Ottawa on Monday for, uh, some other things that were on the agenda. But I would say one thing, it's, it's amazing to me, after many years of public service, that you can hear things, uh, people can hear things, people can see things, and people can get a different perspective, uh, just because of how they look at things or how they may hear things. And what I heard, for the most part, from Monday's study session and yesterday's meeting is really good things and good things that are going on in Franklin County. And I think we have a lot to look forward to. And I think the expectation is that, that Ottawa has and, and Franklin County has some great things that are gonna happen. And we have a great community, we have a great county, we have great employees. And I'd like to just sing the praises of those things instead of concentrating on the negative of the things that we don't have or the things that may be wrong. And I think that's the positive outlook that we need to be and the ambassadors that we need to be as citizens of Franklin County.
Okay, Roy?
Yes, I went to the sheriff's, uh, uh, ceremony yesterday afternoon. I thought it was an excellent ceremony and recognized our, our new achievements of our new officers and, uh, and the work some of our deputies have done over the years as far as public safety and, and what they got to deal with out there in the public, saving lives and, and that sort of thing. And, but Jeff did mention his accomplishment, uh, at that ceremony. I thought he was gonna give himself a, an award for his accomplishment. He might, he might say what, exactly what that was, Jeff, if you would.
Certified public manager.
Certified public manager, which is, uh, another kudos for the sheriff department and our, and our staff that keeps improving themselves through education and taking advantage of those kinds of, uh, events. Also, I went to the, uh, the rest of commissioners yesterday morning at, uh, City Hall and talked about Roxanne Park, where it's heading and, and, uh, what to look forward in the future far as progress there. I think I'll be looking forward to the meeting with, uh, FCDC people coming up, what, tomorrow, Thursday? And, uh, see where that organization's gonna go. That's all I have.
Okay, um, in addition to those other meetings, I, I did go to the East Central Kansas Area Agency on aging meeting yesterday. Uh, we got some updates on the, uh, switching over with Mid-American Nutrition and, uh, a lot of discussion on the, the vans that came along with that. Uh, a lot of miles on them, a lot of maintenance still needed on them. They were taking care of that, trying to, uh, take care of one of the vans that was lost in the high waters in October down in Anderson County, getting that replaced. We also, uh, updated the, um, policies. Uh, a lot of it had to do with dress codes and different things because of the Mid-American Nutrition staff coming on, switching, uh, the expectations of, I, I guess I should say East Central Kansas, but definitely the leadership there has very high expectations for their staff, and rightfully so. They're a public entity and they deal with a lot of seniors. And, uh, I, I personally appreciate the, uh, that type of leadership style that says, no, we're going to, uh, have this level of expectations for our employees as opposed to, uh, letting something slide. And so I think that's a big switch for the nutrition, but, uh, compliments on the meals, uh, looking at possibly helping some people get microwaves in their homes so the frozen meals they can have delivered. Just the organization of that whole, um, process, uh, merging those two and taking care of six counties is, is amazing. And certainly, um, I think a, a credit to, again, the county and the area that, what they do. But it was, uh, a very well-attended meeting as far as represented from those. But it was, uh, a very well-attended meeting as far as represented from those six counties and the leadership there that, uh, making sure their policies are up to date. Other than that, then, as you mentioned, there's a meeting tomorrow, FCDC, Derek?
Ten AM at, uh, the Hasty Room over at OU, it is a, they're calling it a visioning session. Um, we have a, um, retreat coming up, FCDC does, and I, I think the purpose of this meeting tomorrow is just to allow the greater membership to offer ideas on what they would like to see, just to get a discussion started in advance of the strategic retreat, so that we have a pretty good idea of what the consensus desires seem to be, so.
Okay, um, it might be, I know there's two or three other meetings coming up with FCDC too, and some of them are Executive Board, some of them are the retreat, some of them are this vision planning, maybe you or Janet could maybe send us all an email kind of maybe what each one of those are and who's expected there, and if we have to make sure that we've, uh, been registered or included in their accounts or whatever, that might help. Because I know there's three or four of those meetings coming up, if you would do that. Okay, um, looks like our next meeting then on December the fifth? So if there's nothing else, I'd consider a motion for adjournment. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we are adjourned.